Yeah, me too. The meeting will come to order. Please join in this flag of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have one item that's not on the agenda. Received notification from the election committee that Nancy Bunty has withdrawn her name as the director selection. I expect approval to commence January 23 regular meeting.
I so move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
No, just announce your proxy that you are holding the proxy.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I have the proxy for Ruth Mather, who may be here tonight. Second, February 20 board work session. Second. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Nine zero. Reports from the joint advisory committee, Lakes is up first. Their representative here, Matt Chaney.
Good evening, y'all. As most of you may or may not know, most of our time was spent in the past year and a half discussing the wake boat issue. And my understanding is we're going to vote on that tonight. We appreciate your consideration of that. As I've said before, we tried to make recommendations that were actionable, enforceable, and legal. And all of our recommendations were vetted by both POA legal and Rick's group to make sure that we were doing things that would be accurate. In other news, the drawdown on Lake Anne has become a problem because of frequent rain that they had recently. According to Rick, it's down about 15 inches and now looks like dredging, maybe in post motion because of due to rain. We'll see how that goes and see if we can continue to get the thing down if we don't have rain. In addition to that, there was a motion made towards the kayak, for the kayak demo days, kids catfishing derby, and white tarantula grave school kids fishing derby. And that motion was seconded and passed. In addition to that, we had someone from the committee recommend that lakes, since they are a big part of the activities that take place in Velvista, be given their fair share of resources and dollars in the fall. And activities include swimming, fishing, boating. And our community continues to grow to be feeling that lakes will be one more recreational activity for years to come. Unless there are any questions, that's my end.
Thank you, Matt. Next on the agenda, Recreation Committee. Gary.
All right, Gary Franklin, Chair of Recreation Committee. And we got our meeting on February 10, 2020 for the Recreation Committee. We had a guest, which was great, John Udecker, which is a board candidate. I'd seen him a lot. I would ask any other board candidates to come join our session in March or April to even have a better understanding of what we do as a community. Committee reports, I'll be brief on those. Ranchwood, Soho was up and running. They've got the makeover. Lake Anne, Mark Liewer had, I think, a good thing that we discussed as well, but it's still better than it came to us by. County Park, as usual, is in good shape. There's a lot during the winter. And Bearden, a couple of things happened there since we tried to no view, but soon at the end. No concern for tennis courts. And there is a spring that's gone, people. The rates do a lot of moving parts, it's looking a lot better. It's created about 15 kids who are out there playing softball. The last time I was out there, lots of walkers on the trails, keep that. Run ring. I went out there and it looks like it's been the best months we've had at Earth, just based on the classics that we have. And there's people that basically decided that it didn't matter how cold or wet or rainy, but they still wanted. Rolling Springs. Didn't have to work because we had somebody out there. Candy Creek wasn't getting any, many people out there like that one. Each area is closed, there's a couple things going on with the bridge that they put in. I thought it was just a minor damage. As far as Matt Field's, in good condition. And it was about 24 minutes, about 15 minutes, and Chris out of the water. Running Parks in good shape. We visit this March 7th, the next meeting, three. After the time we had on meeting, there was 24 people that already signed up. Some might question how big that's going to be, but I think it'll be attended by our usual. We talked about some of the capital projects, we got some information relative to the fact that those are on table. And we're likely to visit them again at some point, if that was hard to read, that was people involved, of course, and we don't. We had a conversation about silver stickers and silver, just to make sure we were clear on this, to be that. Joe did a great job and gives us information on that. And we received a historic site request. We built a Mr. Country Club. We went and we were looking to put a couple of historical sites. And that's really through process. It looks like Matt, we have to wait until the marketing department. And I think in August, we will have a visit and use every one of them in the historical.
It goes to the board in August, and they would vote on it at that time.
What connection does that have?
Well, keep in mind that Country Club was designed by K. Faye Jones, who founded the University of Arkansas. Go hard.
And our next meeting, 4:00 p.m., Monday, March 9. So anybody who would like to come join us, we would love to appreciate it. Thank you, Gary. Next up is golf, Jason.
Thanks, Lloyd, Chair of Golf Committee. Our February 12 recap, real quick. Off around, revenue was down last year, whole year, really not a bad year considering all the days we were closed due to flooding. We were down 153 on the 19. Upcoming golf rounds were off about 6200 again, weather last year. We had 90 inches of rain, as we talked about, at Highlands last year and the normals total reported. A lot of days off. Great news, the January's rounds, 213, had great weather. And we're just assuming a prey for good weather through the spring. And also a national trend that same golf rounds increase in 2020. We had visitors also, as Gary mentioned. John was at our, this month's meeting. James Simpson has been at one of our meetings. Asked the other candidates to join us. Charlie Teal was there for the voters. The foundation discussed the 2020 Cooper Community Charity Classic. The disappointing the golf club in June. This is a ET tour event that we've hosted the last few years. Last year, the foundation gave $30,000 in grants, excuse me, to live five local charities. Boys and Girls Club of Mid-County, Bellosusti Courtesy Band, Bellosusti Hamlet Shelter, Bellosusti Sun Roadery, and Village House, courtesy grants. If you would like to get involved in that event, please contact Charlie. As recently published, the nine holes known as first ever, will be reopening in the spring starting the 1st of April, barring any more flooding. Hopefully we won't get it this year. And there will be some rerouting due to bridge removal, and it will be in adjusted tee time format. So look to the website, we have the golf update for more information on that. A couple more things, real quick. As mentioned last month, we've adjusted our meeting format a little bit. And last month's main topic was, I just continue to increase rounds. There was some great ideas that were discussed, and we're looking forward to implementing and continue to promote this golf stuff and golf. That's that time of year that we're looking for, as all committees are looking for members. If anybody wants to join the golf committee, we encourage you to go to the website, fill out the application, and we'll go through that whole process. And all the other committees will be looking for people. Note for dates, March 10 is the Golf Expo here at Bearden, Golf Fest, April 11 at Tanger. And our next meeting is March 11, the 8th.
Yes. Will the APT tournament be a McCarty-Daniel tournament this year? Is Cooper bowed out?
I'm not sure on that.
I think Charlie mentioned that.
Probably, yeah.
He mentioned that in a meeting that he had a meeting with Cooper, and perhaps McCarty-Daniel has stepped up the play this year. So anyway, we've got a title sponsor.
That's good, that's good. Yeah, they're looking to raise a lot, like 40,000, I think they should, for foundations. They're going to pick five more foundations to vote with. Anything else?
My name's Jason. Next up, Community Involvement Committee. Nothing from them? Okay. Next item, financial reports.
All right, we weren't sure how many people were going to attend today's meeting. We made 50 copies. It looks like we still have some more. But if anybody is watching, live streaming, watching, they can contact Tammy at this email address, and she'll send you the entire 170-page packet of today's meeting. We're going to briefly go over the financials because it is January and it's the first month of the year. So we're going to start with the POA. You'll see that our gross profit is down a little bit. While assessments are up, golf is down. What we think is occurring is a lot of our golfers are delaying getting their membership until March 1, when the new B schedule kicks in. So while Jason from the golf committee referenced our rounds are up, which is great, but our memberships are down, but it's a delay right now. On the expense side, you'll see that we're doing fairly well. The salaries are across all divisions. That's a $71,000 savings. Some support contracts, repairs and maintenance, and professional fees. So the team is doing a good job in conserving expenses. And you'll see that the EBITDA for January, and it's just the first month of the year, is $56,000 to the positive. And then on to the water utility. You'll see that our revenue is actually up by $56,000, and that's water usage mainly in additional homes. As the community adds homes, there's more users. Expenses, they were just a little bit over expenses compared to budget, mainly the annual software budget. So the EBITDA was better by $28,000. So it's a nice way to start the year where both the POA and the water department are better than the budget. Any questions?
I don't have a question. I don't have a question, but I do have a motion. And after many meetings that we've had regarding the necessity to do a revised budget this year, based on some things we found out in December, and January, and November, namely bridges at golf courses, it affected the fail budget. And then also the pass budget was approved January 16. And so because of that, I would move that we approve the 2,000 revised operating capital and simple cash flow budgets, replacing the fail budget that we had implemented for all of this year, which were approved in the beginning. Jim, is that later on in the agenda, to prudently revise? And I have a presentation. You were at last week's meeting.
Yes.
And we're going to be using the exact same presentation, since we have a lot of people that haven't seen that. I'll make the motion then. Fantastic.
Next item, listed on the program, you can see that open forum comments and questions that came in. I want to assure you that we do take comments and questions seriously, and we do consider what our property owners say. Next item will be the open forum. The first, I have John Kennett.
Stay in the, please just stay in the streets if you would like.
Three women are up here. I'm just here, I'm a guy, I said twice, I'm going to tell her. And I ride a bike, and that's one of the reasons the wife and I moved over here. And it's a good thing, you put physical activity, ask a doctor, a little intense. And I get out there and I clean the trails as well. And to me, that's almost as much fun as riding a bike. They're taking a hike. And I've done, I've got to do some more. My, my, just the blue deck took me to the bike. And you've got somebody that's a wall foundation, we have that's hooked up. The majority of the money that is required to make the trails. And that's great. But that's basically all I got to say on that. Well, honestly, I personally, I started biking about 13 years ago, and, but I was a smoker. And two don't go well together. And I asked the doctor about that, and he, hopefully, if he knows something, I'd like to hear. But he gave me a card, SOS, and I smoked. It took pretty a while, like about a year, but I liked the ride a lot. And my lungs were hit at that. And I was lucky not to get any complications. So it was enough motivation to be just out there. I haven't been smoking for 13 years. And I, and one of the reasons, the primary reason, probably maybe elsewhere, but.
Thank you. Congratulations on being a non-smoker. I myself am a former smoker, so I understand what's involved. And thank you for your efforts to keep the trails clean.
Thank you very much.
Next up is Jan Myers.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jan Marie Myers, 71 Merritt Drive. I just wanted to talk a little bit. I have always been for the walkway that we had talked about, I believe, the glass frame, sort of connector between Walleye Springs and the metal park. And I really, my only greatest concern about it was the privacy and the preservation of the trees behind our property. Walkway along with the soft rail running directly behind our property, and the trees I'm speaking about act as a natural privacy curtain and noise barrier from the traffic off of eastern roads. I understand, and I love the trails, but the idea of a walk path, which I have been for, but a 10-foot wide concrete walkway, is entirely different animals. And I just wanted to see how many trees will be lost in the construction of this. And I know there's a great field, I know what's going to happen. But a lot of the residences on Merritt Drive, Murrow Lane, and Merritt Circle will directly be impacted by this project. And we just feel that evolving considerations since the initial meeting that we can put, that this will affect all the residents in the streets I'm managing. And it's personal because it involves our property, my family, and it enroaches and approaches, excuse me, on our privacy directly. And we just want to see, so I would like to meet with you as well to see. And I understand that maybe after the construction, we would put up more plants and shrubs, and we appreciate that greatly. The one reason I moved here is all the pine trees that Monty posted grows. They're a long use there. And I would hate to lose those because those take years to grow back up. And they do act as a natural curtain for the noise and our privacy. So I would like to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jan?
I think you will get an answer to some of your concerns at the end. You've got an answer.
Thank you.
Next one up is Mike, and I apologize, I can't.
That's okay. I'm going to wait for the Recreation Committee to voice any concerns.
This is the time, right now.
Ken Tate said he wasn't going to be here, so I thought I'd talk just a little bit on Pickball. We have 92 people in the Pickball email group right now. We have a live return starting up in March with 24 ladies that are signed up. Normally, we play outside Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Most people don't play on Saturday or Thursday, right? They have ordered to do nets, thanks to Joan, talked to her, and she said that they would order nets for that, but unfortunately, if you resurface, and she said that she'd be paying attention to that, they wanted to make sure that gets on the agenda. Currently, inside, most of our people play almost every week. If it's outside, we play, you know, we'll play over method. But it has to be above 45 degrees for most people to get up there to play. It's not like golfers will play in diamond sun count. And I'm one of those guys, too. But we play a lot in Rogers. We play at the Gulf on the Center, where they've got three courts to play on, three courts at the RAC, which has Hydras Activity Center. And then the Boys and Girls Club here in Velvista, there's a lot of people that play there. So again, just wanted to address the court surface. I know that we tabled any new courts on that stuff this year, and I certainly understand a bunch of your concerns, but wanted to lay that out there for the rest of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more schedule. Brent?
I'm sorry, I, Brent?
Perfect. Calvin Brent.
Hello, I'm Brent Steinsperm, head of the Oakley Lane. I sent you on email expressing sentiments and rationale for why I support the medical connector. I'd just like to reiterate some of those points. It really falls down, I think, to three essential elements. Number one, topography. Number two, connectivity. Number three, usability. And topography, I think, seems pretty straightforward. There aren't a lot of areas in Velvista that are flat and suitable for a solid surface trail such as this. For connectivity, obviously, the next two very desirable parks that we have in Velvista. But it doesn't just stop there, because obviously it connects to Greenway, which opens up many more track, mail, miles of trail, trail to go much further. And then the last piece is the usability, that obviously there's a lot of people that don't want just one type of trail to use. And we have a lot of people that I think would benefit from a trail that is open to everybody that would possibly want to get out on a trail there. So it would be a great service to the membership to provide a trail such as this that connects Walleye Springs or Connect. So thank you very much, and I'm looking to hopefully here to make the yes vote.
Thank you. Anyone else with this guy?
I'm Roger School, 19 Dawson Drive. I'm glad to see and hear that you're going to open Burt's Dale in April. And I'm concerned about the statement of many makers. I believe that Burt's Dale will maintain like the other golf courses. They'll generate four to five times the revenue that Burt's Dale would generate in April. So that's just a negative to the golfers, if we're going to do that. You know, now with the assessment, and we're just thinking now is the time to think outside the box though. You know, Burt's Dale actually could be a very good boat overall, just the way it is now. Go through a six, go across the bridge, where the rest of it is, play a par five down, a par four back, a par three. Come back across the bridge, play a par in hole, ten, eleven, and twelve. It'd be perfect for golf ball golfers. Nick was been talking about that for years. They're building 13 hole golf courses over in France. This would be a great 12-hole golf course. Four par threes, four par fours, four par fives. Doesn't even matter now. Same stuff, the next one. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Billy, I live in 42, Don Taylor Drive, which is a 12-hole golf course. And I live on, I call it Tyree Raceway. And I'm on two, a bit, a little bit, on the program here where it has operation of water grab. It is speed exceeding five miles per hour. It is prohibited within 100 foot of the structure of shoreline. Attended a lot of meetings, different lake people. And I would like to see that pushed out to 200 foot, which is the same rules that wake them. And also for property owners in the main body of the lake. They're afforded the luxury accommodation, whatever, that pleasure boats, whether they're going full speed and or pulling tubing or skiers, they're still 200 feet away from any dock. But primarily, it's a safety issue with me and other property owners. If we have family, friends, children, kayaking, atboarding on the water dock, 100 foot is not very far away. Technically, the way this is reading, any type of boat can go full speed on Tyree Channel as long as they're 101 feet away. I would like to see that be 200 foot. I don't see why it can't be. Our channel is actually somewhat same or narrow than the two other channels that afforded that accommodation, Stonyburg, Rankin Park. They have no weight, we reserve. This would still allow the fishermen to use the center part of the channel to go full speed, but at least give a safer buffer zone for the property owners on Tyree Channel. Push it out to 200 foot, which is what y'all passed the first reading, I noticed, as far as wake boats and other boats. There's no skin and tubing on that channel, but if they could still go full speed. And reentering, they can go full speed within 101 feet. Anybody that wants to be out there kayaking, that's a pretty good way. And if you're by a structure. And if you're by a structure, they can be adapted. So I'd like for y'all to take a reconsideration on the requirement and push it up to two hundred foot. Thank you.
Any more? On a couple of those items, I'd like to address those. In the past, we used to wait until the following month. We would provide our property owners with answers to their questions. While some of them we can't respond to because in some cases we have to do additional research. But we do want to, we've started since last month, trying where we address select ones that we know that we can answer immediately. So regarding the Lowings Springs Connector, you know, I know that in some cases where trees are going to be removed, I encourage you to wait until after it's been installed. If you still are concerned about not having enough trees in that area, contact me directly. I will put you in touch with the right people. They've been very good about installing trees and hedges and so forth to ensure that people have privacy. Also, in the back of the room here, on that square table by the one entrance, is the entire plan on paper. It's about forty-plus pages long. It's not the easiest thing to go through, but you're welcome to go take a look at that and see where it goes along the trail. Regarding pickleballs, pickleball courts, that was a very challenging discussion for the board. They really wanted to do more pickleball courts. They wanted to do more repairs to pickleball courts, and that was a really tough one that they had to say, had to cut. And I would use the words of one of our court members when they said that pickleball courts and the dog park and the archery would be potentially the first alternance that we would, that the board would consider if we have a good year and it's looking strong. They would be the first option. So they fully recognize the importance of those projects. Unfortunately, they had to make some budgetary changes. Regarding the minimally maintained at Berksdale, I know this is that Key Beans, who was our golf course superintendent, is just awesome. He does a fantastic job. So while we're going to maintain those courses, that course at a lower level, I have a feeling you're not going to notice it because he's really that good and he's going to do his best to make sure that it lives up to our standards. So I'm very optimistic. And then the last thing regarding the regulations, the lake regulations that the board is considering tonight, I know that the board is still looking to talk about that. I've had conversations with two or three court members today alone, and they've had divergent opinions on it. So it's still a very talked about and debated issue. But I can assure you this is regardless of where the board lands, the Lakes Committee has committed to, that this is not the end. This is one step in the process, and they're going to continue to review this. If the policy, the regulation that is being presented today, if it goes through, they've committed that they're going to continue to review it on a regular basis to see if further changes need to be made. So I don't want to give anybody the impression that they've been voted in today if everything ends. And that was it. Okay, I have one item that did take some additional research. We had an item that came up in several meetings. It had to do with a member making the assertion that in our efforts to sell our inventory of E O A owned lots, we had inadvertently caused a loss of real estate taxes to the city by lowering the appraised value of all unimproved lots. At the time, I responded, I didn't believe that to be the case, but I did some further research. I sat down with the assessor. He explained the process to me. In a recurring cycle, all areas of the county are routinely reappraised. Bellevista is scheduled for 2021. At that time, his appraisers will consider all sales during the previous twelve months, sales considered to be out of the ordinary, normal course of business, like if you sold your house to your son for five dollars. Those will not be included. Our sale of three hundred and forty-eight lots in four days will be excluded by both parameters and therefore will not affect real estate taxes for the city of Bellevista. At this time, he told me that all unimproved lots in Bellevista are appraised at a minimum of three thousand dollars. Now, after the reappraisal, notices are mailed to property owners, and then there is a window of opportunity for appeal if you disagree with what they've come up with. So in the fact that we've been selling these lots, in the past twelve months, we have sold about three hundred and forty lots from our inventory, resulting in an increase of about ten thousand dollars a month in monthly assessment income to us. So I think that's a link for everybody. We got them out of our inventory, and we've got people who wanted to own those lots. So that was my response to that. I hope that, even I think you said three hundred and forty, but I said sold six hundred and forty.
Did I say three forty?
Six forty.
Well, six forty.
Okay. Next, the revised budget. Okay, so, all right, here we go. Can you hear me?
No.
Not too well. Testing. Hello, there we go. Oh, okay. And you turned off the slide presentation. Got it? And we'll get the slide presentation and lose the microphone. All right, the goals. First of all, we were revising the 2020 budget. So right now, until Jim makes his motion, right now, the budget that is placed is the fail budget. Okay? But with the passage of the assessment increase, we need to revise the budget. So that's what we're working on. Also, as we've mentioned specifically in regards to the pickleball courts, this is a very lean budget. And then finally, on the 2020 Plan brochure, we had a number of financial commitments that were made to the membership. We need to make sure that every single one of those commitments was accounted for in the budget. All right, so the revised budget, the starting place was we had two months of the fail budget and then ten months of the pass budget. Keep in mind that these budgets were originally written in October. So a lot has occurred, there's a lot since October. So we tried to use as much updated information as possible, and then we wanted to make sure the budget was lean. Okay, so a couple of things, a couple of significant changes. Now, first of all, the assessment increase doesn't start till March. With those two months, the assessment increase, that's a loss of three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Maybe not a loss, or just we're not going to get the three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Also, the West Side Stump Dump, we now have more information regarding how we're going to close that. And we have to close it in following ADQ standards. That's going to cost us one hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. The Berksdale Bridge removal, sixty-five thousand dollars. One change that's for a positive is that we're not, our salary employees will not be eligible for an increase this year. That's a savings of forty-eight. And then Berksdale Bridge is going to be minimally maintained, and we talked about that earlier. And that's going to save us forty-nine thousand dollars. All right, so we had to go through the projects. Now, another thing is we have to fix the Scottsdale Bridge. That was not in the original budget. So that's a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. And then we had a pump at Berksdale die in us, nice and convenient, seventeen thousand dollars. So that resulted in the board having to really make some very challenging and hard decisions, and they had to make some cuts. So the pickleball courts were one, the archery range, rental boats and so forth, and the small dog park. Those were hard decisions to make. We know that the small dog park is very popular. We know that pickleball is a very popular growing sport, and to cut those was a very challenging decision. All right, let's get to the financial commitments. So here's the first financial commitment. Six dollars, the increase will go towards the elimination or reduction of current fees. So six dollars is eight hundred and forty thousand dollars. Now, where do we get that? Approximately fourteen thousand in premium homes are in good standing. What we did was we looked at a three-month average, and the three-month average of homes that were in good standing came out to thirteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-six. So we use fourteen thousand. Now, as the number of homes get built, as more homes get built in our community, that number's going to have to go up, and we're going to have to reassess that. So every several months, we're going to have to go, okay, is it fourteen thousand? Is that the right number? Is it four thousand one hundred, and four thousand two hundred, and so forth? So that's how we got to the eight hundred and forty thousand dollars. So the first thing is we repositioned four hundred and twelve thousand dollars from golf to assessments. So a lot of people have notated that golf is subsidized to the two point two million dollars. So if we subsidize it two point two, and we reposition four hundred thousand dollars from golf to assessments, what's that going to do in subsidizing? It's going to go from two point two to two point six. So I don't want anybody to be surprised when they see that number at the end of this year. Okay? Similar with recreation. So recreation, we're repositioning because of the fitness, manual fitness in the pool and the beach. And lakes, because of boat registrations, in general, income because of the activities or the photo ID cards. We sell about ten thousand of those each year, and with the six dollar decrease, that's how you get the math. So you'll see the total impact is eight hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. Next one, this is a much easier one. Okay, two dollars will go towards the tropical fire. And in the future, it'll go towards reserves, but right now, we have to deal with the tropical fire. That's two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and we have legal fees of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in our budget. That's a pretty straightforward one. Four dollars will go towards operational costs and future financial capital improvements. That's five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So right now, in the revised capital budget, we have three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars in capital projects. And it's in the packet that you have. It has a detail of every single project we're looking at. Okay, remember, the target is five hundred and sixty. So we revised the operating budget. We had to increase the number of non-capital projects by sixty-two thousand dollars. We're going to have to buy more fitness equipment. Okay? With more people, we anticipate more people will buy the activity card, more people will use gym facilities, so we're going to have to have more cardio equipment. Okay? That is a non-capital item. So that's included in the sixty-two. Additional pigment advantages, the fishing leaning station was something that the Lakes Committee has been talking about for some time. Go for it. The operating budget also went up by five hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. That is compared to the fail budget, so it's a net increase. But I want to point out that the stump dump is included in there and the removal of the bridge. You could make an argument that that should, I should not have included those two figures in the five hundred and seventy-nine. So I called it out to you, showed it to you, and still, the total dollar amount is nine hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. If you forgot those two things, you would still be above the commitment. Okay? But I wanted to make sure, I wanted to be as transparent as possible on those two. One dollar will go towards rebuilding reserves, a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And you'll see that in the simple cash flow budget, we have a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Okay, important considerations. If you look at our financials over a year period, we're very seasonal. We bring in more money during the summertime when a lot of people play golf. And we bring in less money in October, November, and so forth. So the reason I'm pointing this out is because since our expenditures and our revenue are not this straight line throughout the year, the contributions to the financial commitments will not necessarily be a straight line. Okay? So we'll probably contribute more during the summer, and less during the offseason and so forth. So I just want to make sure. So if anybody starts tracking on a specific basis on March and April, and they go, wow, you're actually trending below your bracket. And then we'll trend above in the summer months. What's most important is at the end of the year, we meet the financial obligation. Okay? All right, so here's the simple cash flow. Lots of numbers, so we highlighted the numbers at the bottom, because that's what most report. But you'll see on the very top, you have the income, you have the cost of sales, expenses and so forth. And you'll see that we've included the new feature that we have. You'll see the capital changes. And you'll see the water loan. Okay, now look at that water loan right there in the bottom, right there, the two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Now, I referenced earlier two hundred and eighty thousand dollars going towards the tropical fire. There's two separate ones, two separate things. Two hundred and eighty to work the tropical fire. It's in the operating budget, it's an expense, it's a legal expense. And then you have two hundred and eighty that we're planning on paying back on the water loan. Okay? Just coincidentally, the same dollar amount. And you'll see that the simple cash flow peaks by at four thousand dollars over break even. Here's the water utility. See, the water utility really doesn't change too much between the pass and the fail and the revised budget. Not much of a change there. And to recap, whatever goals were when we were talking about the revised budget is to revise it based upon the assessment increase, update the budget with current information, make sure the budget is lean, and most importantly, make sure we fulfill the financial commitments that were made to the membership in the 2020 Plan.
We have a motion to approve the budget.
I hate to be redundant, but I will rephrase it, but I move that we approve the revised budget as submitted by management to Matt.
Jim? Motion is there a second?
Second by Terry.
Second. Very good. We debated it a lot. Are we ready to vote? We are. Okay, I have Ruth Sprox, the editor. She stated that she would be voting in favor of this. So all in favor? Eight, all opposed. One vote. The next item is the proposed amenity fee schedule. On page one hundred and nineteen of your board packet, you will see the memo regarding the fee schedule. And on page one hundred and twenty-one, you will see a graph of the fee schedule. This is the tri-cold that we hand out at Member Services. So there's two issues on this. First, and I want to make sure I don't confuse anybody. So first of all, we have the amenity fee schedule. This is the same, or this format is the same format that we have used for a few years. So this is your annual fee schedule, and this is for 2020. If you look at those fees, those fees are consistent with what was included on the 2020 Plan Assessment Increase Marketing Material. Okay? So this is the fee schedule. The marketing material talked about making a commitment of three years, and there was a little bit of confusion because the first vote ended in November, and we were always talking about that it would last for three years because on the first vote for the assessment increase, it was going to kick in on January one. On the second vote, which passed, it's kicking in on March one. And some people continue to assume that it would be for three years, but the marketing material said it would carry through to the end of 2020. Two months difference? When all said and done, it probably makes sense to just go through February twenty-eighth of 2023, make it a full two years. That way, if anybody thought it would go through to that timeframe, that's the safest route. So it's two different motions, and I want to make sure we were clear. One was on the amenity fee schedule, which is for 2020, and one is on the fee schedule that the board is committing to for a three-year period. Last point I wanna make is there are upcoming fees, just a few, like Blowing Springs, the campground, that are not, that were never included on the twenty-twenty plan assessment increase schedule. Okay? The three-year commitment does not apply to those. Okay? And you'll see on the bottom of page one hundred and twenty, I specifically call out that note, because I wanna make sure we were very clear. So the next year at this time, if we decide to increase camping fees, that's allowed. But we can't increase golf fees and so forth, because that's committed for three years. Does that make sense to everybody?
Okay, so they're asking for two separate motions, and one motion to approve the amenity fee schedule as you have here. Your motion.
Hey David, I make a motion to adopt revised twenty-twenty amenities fee schedule.
And then you're a second? Jim, second. Ruth has stipulated to be a vote yes on this, so I'll call for a vote this time. All in favor? Any votes? Unvoted. I would ask for a motion to keep this fee schedule in place until February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three. Is there a motion to do that? Mary? Mary needs a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Jerry, Barry? Okay. Any further discussion on that?
Just a comment. I, of course, I'm in favor of it, but we're talking three boards ahead of this board. And, uh, I like the idea of four, but it's gonna be hard to deal with three future boards ahead of us to this, this agreement.
Understood. Okay, Ruth said, I should vote yes. All in favor? Nine zero, if you hold opposition, then approve. Okay. The next, the Blowing Springs Connector, the next item. We have a PowerPoint presentation on that.
Testing. All right, we got that. That's all, fantastic. All right. Uh, so, the Blowing Springs Connector agreement, concept, developed in three miles, actually two point nine miles. A connector that will service many of the homicide residents in Cooper Elementary. Potentially ride their bikes safely to school. Uh, would be possible to ride from Metfield Park all the way down to Fayetteville, about forty miles on a ten-foot-wide concrete path. Okay, a little background, I wanna make sure everybody kinda gets a historical perspective on the connector. So this corridor, this connector was talked about in the early two thousands. Um, next one. We were actually contacted by a former chair of the Recreation Committee, and they were pointing out that over ten years ago, this specific connector was being talked about by the Recreation Committee. Uh, next, first, the first was on the BB Trail Master Plan, showed this trail in twenty-ten. Uh, the POA sponsored a meeting held on this, in December twenty-thirteen, to seek input regarding the trails. If you remember that old Village Voice pamphlet that would be sent out, it was included in that. Also, in, uh, okay, the regional walk bike plan was adopted by city council in open session in two thousand and fourteen. Uh, the POA held a sponsor, a sponsored meeting in June of two thousand and fourteen that was open to the public. Once again, that was covered in the Village Voice, uh, that was sent out to every property owner. Uh, in March of two thousand and fifteen, another meeting was held that also was, went and sent out to all property owners in the Village Voice, uh, and it was an open meeting. Uh, the proposed connector included, was included in an article in March of two thousand and sixteen that was also sent out, uh, to every property owner. That was in the magazine, it was shortly lived, the name was called U R, and now it's called Inside Bellavista, and you get that every month. But that article was featured there. And then there was community input meeting at Cooper Elementary in March of last year. And then the city of Bellavista approved the agreement in January of twenty-twenty. So just to give you a little perspective, when a agreement, when the agreement, when a license agreement is signed, it has to be approved by the city and by the POA, because we're partnering together. And all those meetings are open to the public. So here's a few of the Blowing Springs Connector. And you'll see down in the bottom left-hand corner, that is where Blowing Springs Park is. And you go all the way up, and it goes up Houston, and then does a quick butt hook at the top, and follows Commonwealth, and gets to Metfield Park. So this is the plan that was included, this actual map was featured in that, uh, two thousand and sixteen article. All right. Challenges. Okay, so at the March meeting, uh, overall, a very positive response at that March meeting, but there was a couple of concerns. The first one was drainage. And they actually went through and they did a tremendous amount of work on drainage. We actually met with some of the engineers earlier today, and there was one area where the culvert, where there was, they didn't install a pipe. So they had a culvert, and then it just kinda ended. And there's no pipe to drain it out. They're actually gonna fix that, so this will improve drainage in that area. Uh, they moved the connector further away from the road. A lot of people were concerned about the rate of speed of cars in that area. Uh, next thing is, a number of property owners were concerned about the number of crossings. In the original plans, in a couple areas, they had the connector crossing, and then just a couple, you know, a few yards down, they had the soft surface crossing. You know, right on the same road, you know, right next to each other. Didn't make sense, so they combined them. Also, they wanted to make sure there was as much accessibility as possible. Uh, so all these, all the, the entire two point nine miles is ASHTO compliant. I'm not an engineer, uh, but they, we spoke with their engineers earlier today, so it's fully ASHTO compliant. There is a two-hundred-foot section of the connector, it's up at the corner of Houston and Commonwealth, where it goes, where it pops up pretty steep at the very end. Uh, it is above a five percent grade, but below an eight point three fourth percent grade. And that's important. So what I was told this morning, and I didn't realize this, is so if you go into a ramp, into a building, those typically are at eight point three-three percent grade. So that'll give you an idea of what that grade is like. So it pops up, but it's two hundred feet. But even with that two-hundred-foot section, the engineers told us it's still fully ASHTO compliant. And you've gotta keep in mind that you wanna have it consistent with the road, because you don't want the trail, the connector, higher or lower than the road. Uh, so. All right. Details. Uh, connects Blowing Springs Park all the way up to Metfield, two point nine miles, long, ten foot wide. Uh, most of the connector is, path is on Houston, with a buffer of approximately ten-plus feet. Uh, Blowing Springs Connector will connect with the Razorback Greenway. Uh, if approved, the estimated completion is approximately in the fourth quarter of this year. Uh, no added maintenance cost, so that's one thing that I wanted to talk about. So when the board approved the back forty, it, one of the issues that came with that was the thirty-five thousand dollars to maintain the back forty. And when the, uh, when Little Sugar, the central section was approved, thirty-five thousand dollars in maintenance was approved for that, to maintain those. This does not come with it, it's concrete. Uh, now, the city will still have to maintain the roadside, they'll still have to mow, but they don't want to mow that hand-footed strip. Okay. In your board packet, it talks about landings. And at one point, we thought this would be a workable idea, in that two-hundred-foot section having landings. Uh, but as we spoke with the engineers today, they actually said it could make it worse, because if you have a slope, and I'm trying to describe this, and hopefully I do a decent job. You have a slope that's eight point three-three percent, and if you create a landing, then to catch back up, you have to have more than an eight point three-three. So actually having a landing will actually make the situation worse. I wasn't aware of that when I wrote the, wrote the memo. So when you read the memo, forgive me. Okay. An amendment. So, a couple of years ago, the state amended code to clarify Class One, Class Two, and Class Three e-bikes. Okay? Electronic bikes. And if you've ever seen them, you can see, you know, they have a little thicker frame, and they're much heavier. Um, but it's getting to a point where it's harder and harder to actually tell if it's a bike or an e-bike. Uh, but with this code change, so what we're recommending is that at the same time that the board, assuming they wanna do this, approves the Blowing Springs Connector, they also approve this amendment, which then allows Class One e-bikes on the connector. And a Class One e-bike is must be pedal-assisted, and the assistance stops at twenty miles per hour. Class Two and Class Three bikes, e-bikes, can go faster, or you don't have to have pedal assistance at all. Uh, it's Class Two, uh, no pedal assistance at all, and the assistance stops at twenty miles an hour. In Class Three, it stops at twenty-eight, twenty-six, twenty-eight miles an hour. But those are not allowed, would not be allowed on the Blowing Springs Connector. And this is on page one hundred and twenty-three of your board packet.
First thing we need is a motion to accept this, approve.
I make a motion to approve the proposed limited term of life license agreement to the Blowing Springs Connector.
Is there a second? Barry? Barry, we're second. Okay. Is there a discussion on this? Anybody have a statement, Jim?
I do. I, uh, I hate to say this, but this is kinda my swan song in my active life in Bellavista since nineteen seventy-four. And, uh, I was a part of the design of six hundred and sixty miles of streets in Bellavista. And we always got complaints from the retirement magazines that we had no sidewalks. We, right now, with six hundred and sixty miles of streets, we have a half-mile, four-foot sidewalk right below us in this new subdivision. And that's it. And when I moved here, I always envisioned the Houston-Manchester reach, because it's about the most general reach of its distance in the entire Bellavista community because of our terrain. And, uh, today, we saw some, uh, real detailed design, and I absolutely applaud the EDG, the design and engineering firm. And they answered any of, many, all of my questions. They got all the board, but they answered all of mine. And, uh, regarding your comments from the open forum, the stretch along Houston near Metfield, or near Melanie and Merritt, where you are, they tend to be, tends, the right way tends to be closer to Houston Road, which is kind of away from your tree line. So a specific comment to the open forum, but, um, I hate to, I can't act like a city councilman here, because I've never personally, I've never been more enthusiastic about a project in forty-six years I've lived here. I just think it's a no-brainer. And I don't mind if others disagree, but I just think it's a wonderful, wonderful. And I would like to, if we pass it, I'd like to lead a delegation along, uh, from Metfield Park to Kestrel Mountain and Fayetteville, with a few stopovers and some bars. And that'd be some forty miles. And I, I hope it's approved, but I understand that, so anyway, that's it.
Any other comments? Yeah. Jerry?
I, I need to take a little bit different view from what Jim has just said. And first of all, I want, I want to say, I'm gonna thank all of the people that have sent us emails, all the comments over the time period that people have given, whether it's pro-con or something else. But I'm, I'm a little bit torn overall, because my entire life, I've built upon credibility and integrity. I have to end up doing one or two things. One, making a motion to amend the, uh, and the amendment would be to force it to be ADA compliant. ASHTO is good. Uh, yes, all the trails have been, at least I'm told, they're all built to that standard. I'm concerned about, we have basically within Bellavista, about a third of new families with children. About a third that are retired. And then another third somewhere in between. They're not retired, but yes, they're not young parents. But in particular, for small kids, I mean, the route is touted to be a safe route to school. Okay? And yes, they plan to build it to ASHTO. But also, they claim that the current trails have been built to that standard, including branchable. If they're unbranchable, and you can see how high that slope is. I do go up there, it's much more than five percent. The two hundred feet that is above is four percent. It, it's pretty. It doesn't appear that the road is that steep, but I think there are some other options that haven't been looked at. Basically, I just got the plans yesterday. I did make a mistake in this morning's meeting that we had about it, and then I said there was an eight percent down in the Blowing Springs area. That statement seemed correct. I, I don't think any other excuses, except my eyes saw eight, rather than somebody else's. Apology for that. But the eight percent is either on, on a turn, either going down, coming up. Another section that goes on over to Metfield. I believe it's very possible, uh, it has to cost a little more to build a connector trail coming off the bottom of that somewhere through some progress. May impact other people. There just hasn't been enough time yet to, to really look at these things. You know? I, I find it difficult that, it was clear back to the early two thousands. It was a big push in two thousand and ten. And I don't understand why it wasn't built prior to the national experience. So I'm just, I'm horrified, because I know it's, it's something that's needed, it's necessary, and a lot of people want it. But I'm just afraid that they have a mental picture of this gonna be a nice jail, slope all the way down. Myself, I would have a problem climbing that two hundred feet at eight and a third percent without some way of getting off the trails, stopping, resting, and stalling through there. I'm scared that a small child, say, first second grader, did the vice, started from the top, can't stop. We're, been going through a lot of things for a while. Now hoping to reopen Burkedale, but have to do it in waves. Why? Because they're a great but have to do it in waves. Why? Because there are brave people in adult cars who are going to try. Why do we need to sacrifice our skills and our endeavors? And the trail, the kin, they really use their minds and their abilities as this day and age. There's really nothing that can, can't be done. And that's why I need to go to it. Maybe the first thing that I'll try is to offer an amendment to it, to clear up a section in the agreement that says it must be applicable, but they don't think of the law. Don't define applicable. We've had to be engineered for someone else to be applicable. In this case, I'm fully flexible in this ADA. So, I will make that motion for the original.
And to, if I may, if I may comment, I respect Jerry's comments, and I do disagree regarding the design gradients because of the terrain in Bellavista and much of the existing 50 miles of the Razorback Greenway reaching south and west of Fayetteville, extensions through Rogers, Beckville, Fayetteville, because of the similar terrain, much of the gradients for long reaches are more than a 10% gradient, but it does tend to accommodate bikers and wheel type vehicles.
I could cut it to four.
No, I'm sorry. I apologize if I was, you were complaining.
I was making a motion to amend the original motion, to clear up the phrase in Merritt's "applicable" and make it ADA compliant.
Okay, now it's my turn. It's my turn because there was no motion yet. I had not made a motion. I have to discuss it.
Eric made a motion to amend. Is there a second? Eric, then we will move on. Are there any other comments on the original motion?
Did I make a motion? I apologize. I got to rambling.
Yeah, you made the original motion.
If I did, I'm sorry, Jerry. I got some rambling and I forgot about my motion.
Jerry's motion dies for my second. Are there other comments on the original motion?
Yeah, I want to recognize also that there's a lot of members who want the trail, but there's also members who are very concerned about it. And my job is to listen to both sides, consider the governing documents, and ask questions and get answers. I just want to reiterate that this concrete trail is in fact a trail. It's not a path, it's not a connector, it's not a greenway. It's a trail. PRAA already defines the rest of our concrete trails as trails. See, Fayetteville defines trails as including concrete surfaces. And of course, there's the recreational use statute that talks about trails. I would agree with Jerry about the ADA compliance and believe that there's a certain perception. You know, we did receive a lot of emails in support of it and they were very interesting. Appreciate everybody's opinions. But there seems to be this impression that it will be a very easy stroll into the park, but if you have not walked branchwood, they want to do that and then consider whether we're not, we should be ADA compliant. I have other concerns, liability, the proximity to Britney Golf Course. I would still like to see a study done, not just on the ADA compliance issue, but on moving the trail to that eastern side of Houston. I think that that would solve lots of problems, including perhaps even this ADA question. I mean, the other side may be easier to manipulate. On the maintenance question, you know, it says in there that we're supposed to maintain it. And I'm not sure what that exactly means, except I do know that we agreed in the 2020 plan that the POA would not maintain the trail. It will be different. Blowing Springs will be different. There'll be sog that isn't there apparently. We're looking to add parts south of Blowing Springs as well as north out of Blowing Springs. So, it's not as if we're just still maintaining Blowing Springs, but additional acreage. And so, speaking of that, the parcels go south of Blowing Springs, but it's, the plans for the trail are actually just start in Blowing Springs. So, it seems to me, we either need to be told exactly what that means, why are we including those parcels to the south, or we just need to eliminate them. They don't make sense why they're in there to me. Up at the corner where that button hook Tom reference at Houston and Commonwealth, there's a linking parcel that does not appear part of the list in the parcels. And it looks like it is a right-of-way, but there's other right-of-ways that are listed that I don't understand why that particular one is not. So, it seems as though we're trying to build something that we don't have a permit for. The other issue, of course, is compensation. We're being asked to license hundreds of trails, or hundreds of acres again, for zero compensation, or correct, sorry, $10 for 25 years. And you can do research, I think people have, that other parts of this trail have been subject to eminent domain where the landowner is compensating. Other issues are, you know, there's one, Section 1, there's no actual guarantee that the thing will be built. Section 13, you know, it goes through our popular Blowing Springs and Britney, but we are forbidden to restrict usage. For example, if someone's getting married in Blowing Springs and they have a huge wedding going on, we can't restrict the use of our property for that. So, I think, you know, the ADA compliance is certainly a huge issue, but in my opinion, there's just so much more. And I know Jerry made a motion. It was not seconded. What I would do is make a motion to postpone indefinitely this proposal until all questions and concerns are fully answered.
The motion, is there a second? Okay, we have a motion to table. Any discussion on that?
Are we allowed to?
You are allowed to discuss the table. Yes, I would like to at first. The response to what Steve has said, it's unfortunate that we were unable to attend the engineering meeting this morning. Many of these items were at rest to the satisfaction of board members there, with the exception of Jerry's concerns about ADA. We feel comfortable going forward. We feel that it's time to move the project along. Your concerns have been noted, and it's not the first time that we've heard of it. But any other discussion on the motion to table? Okay, I call for a vote. All votes in favor of tabling this motion?
Table, tabling.
Table the motion. All opposed? Motion is not tabled. We will consider the original motion for the Blowing Springs Connector. But may we suggest something with the church? If you ask person to discuss it, then we want to discuss it. Voice taken. Is there further discussion on the licensing agreement?
I 100% want to pass this. I really do. This connector, the way the community can reach out and they know they want this, we know they want this, and I think it's a great addition to our community. But my job is to approve this licensing agreement. And in this licensing agreement, it does not say zero funds will be used from our members for this. The promises for the assessment have said no funds will be used. I know we're stating, and we've said it 100 times, that there's no additional maintenance. My fear is that this is a licensing agreement for 25 years, and it does not specifically say in the agreement that we will not spend any additional funds. If there is a natural disaster, which we saw happen last year with a windstorm, and trees were knocked down and concrete was destroyed, and the POA is responsible for replacing it, this is our land. Even in the licensing agreement, I feel it should specifically state that if that concrete is damaged, that is the responsibility of the city to maintain and not us. So, that is my only opposition to this. Again, I really want it to pass, but I cannot approve an agreement that doesn't specifically state our financial responsibility.
And Doug, help me out here. I basically tend to agree that because we pledged that in the 2020 plan, and we pledged that in this, that we would not expend any more money for, whether it's trails or whether this is a pathway, until 2023. We didn't say 25 years, but I don't, is it possible with cities in order to throw an amendment in there that we will not maintain this parcel till 2023, or till March of 2023 with our extension? Is that?
Yeah, reasonable. We could do an amendment, but it would be amended to this original agreement.
And then the city's.
City's.
Would approve that, yes. And as we talked with the designers today, a good stretch of the 2.9 miles will be within the 80-foot right-of-way of Houston Road, and also some of it will be within the 60-foot right-of-way of Manchester Drive, especially as you get closer to Commonwealth, because the corridor gets tighter and the grades get tougher. And we realize that the city maintenance of their 80-foot right-of-way occurs at least twice a year in a brush hobby capacity. So, I tend to agree with her comment regarding the lease itself, that if we can impose that with the city until our pledge of the 2020, be scheduling the 2020 plan, because we did state it in that we wouldn't spend any more than what we've already obligated on, whether this is a trail or a paid pathway from a definition standpoint.
Couple of further comments. I hope he just misspoke in central lease, and I'm leasing.
We're leasing agreement with the city.
License agreement.
License, I just wanted.
Good correction.
My last point that I'll shut up after this, and that is, keep saying that it's a connector to Razorback. And this one's very, very wrong. Their section does not connect parts of Blowing Springs and Greenway does not come fully to where this is.
Yeah, and you are, in that respect, you are very, very wrong. The current greenway extends through the Sucker Field, which is in Metfield. It extends on the north side of the Sucker Field, which is in Metfield, extends across the street, which is part of Cooper Elementary Property. And then it currently stops at a parking lot about 40 feet into common property, POA property.
So, it is not connected?
Not yet. So, what I guess, it's not connected now, but we have approved it would be.
Because I believe that someone mentioned that there wouldn't be any additional maintenance in that area because it's all broken. If it's all broken, we have trouble. But anybody remember?
Along the two street right-of-ways. Now, in Blowing Springs Park, we've got explanation from Joan and her rec community that they maintain all of, all of the Blowing Springs Park anyway.
As I've looked at the engineering documents, it does connect to the end, right there at Blowing Springs. It goes right from there, it's right by Park Drive, and it starts right there and heads on the east. So, it looks to me like it was definitely connected.
Are there any other comments? Okay, we're going to vote on that?
Or comment? Understanding the concerns about maintenance, Jimmy has them, we all have them, we don't have that. Can we amend this motion to say that we will pass this limited, whatever we want to call this thing, licensing, with the exception that we will have an amendment to this license, that we will not, we won't be responsible for any maintenance, so that we can get these people started?
Until, until a date.
Until whatever the date is, March of 2023. Because that's, you know, things can change in that. Can we pass it with that exception? Can we make an amendment to that motion?
You could do that. You could tend it upon the city passing that. You would have that.
We'd have to go back to the city to have them to agree to an amendment to this contract.
Just like you're doing with the e-bikes.
That way, we can go forward with this. It's the same thing as e-bike. We can go forward with this. Would we have to rebuff again like a month?
I think what you're asking, do we attach to this motion or do we make a separate amendment motion, like we have with the e-bikes? After we vote on this, if it's approved, we will be voting on the limiting to e-bike Class 1, which is a separate.
So, would the, what you're asking, it sounds like a lot of people would like to talk about it. It would be an amendment that we would do at a later date and then ask the city to, to agree to that? There'll be amendment, an amendment that'd be required at a later date, otherwise with this.
Would be an amendment that would be required at a later date.
Otherwise, we don't approve this.
We go through with this, get that started, and then we launch the e-bikes, and then
Because I know there's going to have to be some specific wording.
Just like we've done, yeah.
Just like we drafted the e-bikes, we'd do the same thing for. I think it's something that we would want to let legal work on for a little bit before we have a vote on it and get some conversation with the city also.
Doug, is that possible? We could have that for ready for next month's board meeting?
Yes.
Any other responsibility?
With, with that clarification or rider.
I think that's entirely possible, and I think it's quite likely that we'll be talking about it. So, okay, with that said, I call for a vote on the motion to approve the proposed limited curable license agreement to the Blowing Springs Connector. Ruth has said she votes yes strongly. I call for a vote. All votes in favor?
Six, seven, all is close? Two. Okay, moving forward, the next item is the e-bike provision.
It's on page 137 of your board package.
Okay, has somebody made that motion?
I approve the first amendment to the limited curable license agreement, which has to do with the Blowing Springs Connector and Class 1 e-bikes.
Second. Second from Jim? Okay. Is there discussion? Is there discussion?
Just a general question, what... Are e-bikes new? In other words, is there a reason they weren't in there originally in 2018? What's sort of the thinking, planning behind this amendment?
I think they definitely are new, or at least you're seeing them a lot more, you know, a lot more common now than they have in the past. And the state changed the code in '17, is that correct?
2017, correct.
So, and I was talking to the mayor about this, and what happens often is the state will change the state statute, and then the cities within the state will then have to make adjustments as a result of that. So they're actually, the city of Elavista is actually moving forward on making a change, and have provided that language to the board that the city is actually working on. But to answer your question, it's, you're seeing them a lot more often than you... 10 years ago, you never saw them, and now you see them three often.
So is there, so the state is basically reacting to their popularity and putting it into their code?
Yeah.
Jerry?
Actually, I started this thing, the reason for it is the current agreement is prohibitive. We know what's happening, so it's legitimate, so I would advise it. And I myself, if I want to get an e-bike, probably be able to find me a person that can provide us with it, so that will help in that manner. One other comment I've got, in all of the agreements, at least the ones we're looking at today, are completely the same, and combines everything, all the uses and so on, and the names of trails and everything, to a trail. Yet the rest of the document is not consistent with that. Talks about maintaining that this agreement, the agreement after the agreement, so on. I just have a problem when things are not consistent going through, similarly, we should be able to define current plans, and then come back and...
I guess I agree with a couple of Jerry's comments. I think the fact that if we approve e-bikes, it'll especially help the population in Elavista because of the terrain of Elavista is steep as some of the rest of the Razorback Greenway and other trails, and I think it'll be helpful for the older population. And so I agree with Jerry in that regard.
Other comments? Call for a vote then, to approve the motion, first amendment to the terminal license agreement, which has to do with the Blowing Springs Connector and e-bikes. Ruth has said yes. All in favor? I see no opposition. Next is the Blowing Springs Connector landing decision, which I... We learned this morning that the engineers are scary against landings. They say it makes it more dangerous, makes certain areas steeper, as Tom referenced. Personally, I think that a person can get two and a half miles, they'll be able to navigate the last 200 feet, since that 200 feet is the same grade that we find on the ramps when you use them for ADA compliance, they're 8.33%. So is there a motion to approve the amendment as stated about landings? Here it done, there is... We move on to the trailheads, the back 40 of Little Sugar Creek.
Page 143, your fourth packet. There are numerous trailheads on the east side, the back 40, and on the central section of Little Sugar. Some of these trailheads are not in, not under control of the POA or the city, they're actually, for example, the community church, and somebody at God has, they have trailheads. But as you see on page 147, is a list of all of the trailheads that are either on POA property or the one that is on city property, would be on city property at the streets department, and this agreement would solidify those trailhead locations.
Okay, now, as you look at the parcel numbers, those parcels in many cases contain a lot of acres, and we're not talking about using all the acres for parking. It's a very specific area that as you go through, you'll see diagrams, pictures marked in red, giving you the idea of the area where these are going to be, so... After the agreement states that, that it's limited to those red areas?
If you ask, yes. Trailhead locations are further identified and limited to those areas outlined in the end, because parcels represented in that picture, I think they are...
It's 143. So we need to find places for these people to park, so they don't park on the street. We build a table. Jerry?
I have some problems with the terminal areas. For one, the one in Blowing Springs, they're already abused, they're already maxed out many times, and now we're going to throw another use in there on top of it with the connector. Someone has reserved the entire park, we can't keep out people using whatever we're calling it, the Greenway, whatever, or can't prohibit anybody from going through there, yet somebody had paid, uh, some way from the whole park. So I think there was a problem here. Another one is that... We look at Tweedy Bird, and some of these, I think it's a pretty good place to have it, but it sits down in a hole. There are massive grins coming through under the road that wash down part of the road, part of everything else, so I perceive it's the next really heavy dump, or can wash that parking lot clear out? Since this is a separate motion, a separate deal, is it covered under the no maintenance or POA, or... No, of course not, I haven't been answered. There's, I'm not sure where they're at in the processes, building, constructing, many of these trailheads have already started constructing on all the bridges, and I'm curious whether the surface, if there had an infill for one of these parking areas, is that surface the correct surface to be, City Councils and ACC? The Tweedy Bird one appears to be the finished product, other than finding a grade, because they're already put over it down. So I don't know how to... There's a question about that. The other question I have is that we're not using all of the parcels? Any can see the follow-up possible? It just bothers me a lot where they are. Do we have connectors to this terminal? Those are my questions.
Regarding the maintenance for the trailheads that are on the back 40, they would fall under the $35,000 that is already committed on the three, for the back 40, there would be no additional maintenance fees. For this area, the central section, same $35,000 is already committed, so there would be no additional funds to maintain those trails, those trailheads. Also, they are required, and they have consistently done this, required to meet all city standards, and you can all city permits. I know earlier you, Jerry, you asked me this morning, you asked me for, to show you the permits for the bridge that is on Little Sugar, and I have it on my desktop, and I'll be able to share it with you tomorrow, and have all the permits.
Okay, do we have a motion?
We need a motion first to continue this, to discuss.
Somebody take a motion to approve the trailheads?
I move that we approve the trailheads as listed in Exhibit A, recognizing that many of them are already built, and the fact that we now, in Exhibit A, we've excluded the wonderful charity from both the community church and the Assembly of God church in an agreement because it doesn't affect our maintenance, I would like to accept it, I would like to thank those two churches as well for offering trailheads where the proposed or existing trails are already located.
You are second to the most...
Second?
You second. Now we can end the discussion. So for example, the parcel is under consideration, when there's the red part of the parcel, is the assumption that the whole red part is going to be used as a trailhead, that, or will there be additional facilities built, or what's... I don't know how large the park is...
The assumption, the assumption limit will be someplace within that sort of that red line. It's very unlikely that it would be as large as those are, okay? They will situate the trailhead...
Somewhere.
When they get there, because a lot of the trails are built, you know, they can change a little bit as they run into terrain and whatnot, and I would assume that the parking lots are also subject to some, we did change, but it will be within those boundaries.
And then, you know, back when we talked about building an archery range over there on our McNelly property, I believe the city informed us that the parking lot itself had to be concrete or asphalt, so I'm going to assume or believe, lest hold otherwise, and I think the ones on the back 40 are already concrete, I think the one at Fairwall is concrete, or will all of these also be concrete?
Or asphalt.
Or asphalt.
So the requirement is where there's ink, so I'm going to use the gun range as an example, that, that gun range, parking lot is by and large gravel, dirt, but there's a section for handicap parking that is asphalt or concrete, and that parking lot is to code. And that handicap spot was actually added about a year to two years ago, so you could say prior to the addition of that, it is not to code.
I don't think that's in the city, I think these are all in the city, so I'm assuming it will be...
I'm just using that.
I'm just using that as an example.
Yeah.
You know, where they have to have handicap parking, they'll have to have, but you'll see, most trailheads are gravel. I think in all the ones on the back 40, I have visited them all, but in any event, what I'd like to suggest is that they do be made of asphalt or concrete, since I believe, like I said, the city informed us they had to be that way anyway, so we want to be consistent. And then if they are asphalt or concrete, perhaps we could stripe and number them, and then put up elevation boxes to help offset some of our ongoing costs for these things. Will there be additional facilities such as porta potties or anything like that constructed? Has there been any discussion?
Water? They have installed water on some of the back 40 trailheads, or at least one, one trailhead? Several. But I have not heard of any plans, one way or the other, for Little Sugar. I mean, is that, seems like a good idea, where we can get water in reasonably, they have porta potties. Jerry, how many porta potty, how many locations have porta potties? How many locations on the back 40 have porta potties, do you know? Do any of them?
Two. Definitely two, though, three, at least three, though some have permanent facilities where they're in parking lots, Metfield first.
For example, we have the, the Metfield parking lot has bathroom facilities through the golf course.
Right, I don't need to put trailhead spot or anything, but I don't know if we've talked about it, and, you know, what we, what we're actually looking at with these trailheads. Jerry?
One of my questions is, what is included within a trailhead? And the second one is, is there plans to build with handicap stalls? According to what should be for parking lot? And we're talking about the city code, ACC is also involved, so I don't think ACC is what...
Absolutely. So all the parking lots, that, you know, some of these questions are very specific, and I don't have all the answers, and I'm not going to, not going to be able to answer every question. Every parking lot will be built to city, state, federal standards, they do not stray from those standards in any way, shape, or form. They will be built to the standards. I don't know what those standards are, I can just tell you that they will build them to the standard code.
I'll repeat my same questions, but please don't shoot me down with stupid questions. But when this agreement may, if this passed, does the city have the ability to build a snapshot for the porta potties wherever they were? Can they do anything other than build a gravel or asphalt or concrete trail?
No, they'd have to come to us and to expand the scope a bit, which you're talking about, the expansion of scope, which...
Thank you.
Any no other comments? I call for a vote, all votes in favor, the trailhead motion? opposed? Two, seven, favor, two opposed.
David, we're pretty much done with item X, I, I, I.
Yes.
I'd just like to make a personal comment. We've been dealing with soft trails, and now our first segment of our trails, if we did approve, we got a couple amendments within a month, but I don't stand for anybody other than myself, but I absolutely applaud the Walton Family Foundation for their money and their reach, and we found out today that... And we found out today that this one, this 2.9 miles is paid solely from funds from the Walton Foundation, Family Foundation. Some of the existing 50 miles has been paid by federal funds, multimodal transportation funds, and Walton Foundation. And I personally want to thank the Walton Foundation. I don't think we've ever felt the need to thank them for roughly $8 million of improvements, trails, blue signs that they've helped us with in the past five years. So that's just my personal comment.
I would echo that sentiment. We seem to be pick, 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 pick. We need to stop them and thank these people for the wonderful amenities and improvements that they've made in our community and make life better for all of us. So definitely, that's kind of what we thank them for.
Next. Next up on your agenda on page 163 of your board packet is the second reading of modification of policy 1.00. We'll incorporate the word, the term, and the definition for activity card. With the passage of the assessment increase, right now we only have photo ID cards. We're changing it to activity card. This is really kind of a stopgap measure. The Rules and Regulations Committee is making, is working on additional changes that need to go into effect as a result of the assessment increase being passed. This is, this will be the second of two required readings to pass to modify policy 1.00.
Second. Is there a motion?
David, I'll make a motion to approve the proposed changes to policy 1.00, which will incorporate the term activity card into our policies. This is the second of two required readings.
Thank you, David. Second. Second from the seat. I don't expect any discussion. So the vote, all in favor? Thank you, I'm here. Moving on, we will now address proposed new wake boat regulations or in general, voting regulations.
This is the last PowerPoint of the day, I'm happy to say. And I think you're happy to say too. Okay. Goals, to develop a regulation to control the use of wake boats on POA lakes. Second one, to balance the interests of varying people, the lakefront owners and boat owners, wake boat owners, and ensure that regulation is both reasonable and forcible. So background, the Lakes Committee received a number of complaints regarding wake boats and the weight that is being caused by these boats. And they started investigating this approximately two years ago. They put a tremendous amount of research into it, and they ended up developing recommendations that were issued to the Rules and Regulations Committee. The committee, the Rules and Regulations Committee, then took those recommendations and codified them into policy, or actually, I'm sorry, into a regulation that would be incorporated into our overall voting regulation. The Rules and Regulations Committee voted on those changes and approved them, thus recommending them to the Board of Recorders. Proposed regulations. So fishing and pleasure boats, there would be no change. It would remain at 100 feet from the shoreline. For ski, water skiing and tubing, it would be increased from 100 feet to 200 feet. And for wake boats, it would go from 150 feet to 200 feet. Now, in the regulation, and that is included in your board packet, I don't know the page number off the top of my head. You'll see that we actually describe the activity. Because a wake boat is not just a term that you say, okay, this is a wake boat. It's actually an activity taking on ballast or using other devices that create that wake. So we actually had to describe the action as opposed to the name of wake boats. So you'll see in the regulations, there's a very detailed description. We had to describe the action, not just label it wake boats. Because, because of the technologies that's out there, it's not this hard and fast, this is a wake boat, this is not a wake boat. It's a lot more complicated than that. And you can have a wake boat that doesn't take on ballast. It won't create a large wake. But once it takes on ballast, then it creates a large wake. So in the one sense, it's not a problem. In the other sense, it is a problem. So that's why we describe the action. Okay, next step. Assuming if the board were to approve it today, any change in regulation. Sorry, let me back up. So normally, when a policy is changed, it takes two votes. For example, when the board was changing policy 1.00, they did the second vote, and then it goes into effect. During the discussion, during the creation of this, there was various times where we used the word "policy" and various times that we used the word "regulation." Including myself, there was times that I used the word "policy." A regulation technically only requires one vote from the board. But the board decided, because there was some confusion caused, that they would require two votes. So if they vote on it tonight, and if they approve it and send it forth, it will then go to an open session, the work session on March 28th, and then would be voted upon at the second time on the March 26th regular meeting. But I just want to clarify that we technically don't need that second vote for a regulation, but it's just required, but it's probably prudent because we wouldn't want anybody to get the impression that the board is racing through this regulation and not taking three votes. Okay. Reevaluation. The Lakes Committee, this is not, this is not the first step that the Lakes Committee has taken, this is actually the second step. Last year, they made the recommendation to take wake boats from 100 feet to 150 feet. This then goes to 200 feet. So the Lakes Committee has clearly stated that they want to reevaluate and potentially change it down the road, but want to see how it goes this time and then make potential future changes. So they don't want anybody to get the impression that this is the end of the effort. Now, the board may stipulate further research for the committees, for the Lakes Committee, potentially setting up neighborhood watch style. This would be very helpful. All too often, the lake rangers will receive a complaint, and the property owner will say, two weeks ago, a wake boat did this. Well, we can't do anything about it. It was two weeks ago, unless you can tell me who owned that wake boat, the date and time. So if we were to set up neighborhood watch, and Jerry, Jerry Hofer came up with this idea. If we created a neighborhood watch where we can then contact the lake rangers immediately and go educate that property owner that's using that boat incorrectly. Also, monitoring reporting to make sure that we're staying on top of this. The proposed, well, at this point, the approved revised budget for 2020 includes sufficient funds for lake rangers. We wanted to make sure with this, we anticipated that this new regulation would go through, this, the wake boat regulation would go through. We wanted to make sure we included in the budget a sufficient number of rangers. The Lakes Committee has additional recommendations that are not regulations. For example, when you register a wake boat, we're going to ask you to identify it, and they're going to have a different type of sticker, which will allow us to more clearly identify if that is a wake boat, that is a ski boat, so forth. Recap, develop a regulation to control the use of wake boats on POA lakes. Really want to emphasize this second one. This is very challenging for the board and for the Lakes Committee, where they have to balance the interests, at times conflicting interests, of property owners. And they're trying to strike that delicate balance between boat party. And ensure the regulation is both reasonable and forcible. So Rick Echols and the lakes, and the lake rangers were involved in this to make sure that we didn't develop a regulation that was not reasonable for the lake rangers to actually enforce. So we involved them in the process, thus making it worse. And that's the end of my presentation.
Okay, 168. Will someone make that motion?
I make a motion to amend the regulations to incorporate the language developed for the regulation of wake boats. This is the first.
Thank you. Second? Jerry, preparing a second? Discussion? David?
To the gentleman who spoke to us earlier, it may be a bit of his last name. I think he lives on Lockland, and he was talking about Tyree. If we, you know, this is the first reading we've passed this, that doesn't preclude us from at some point in the near future of prohibiting boats from operating within them. We can change it to say, or a future board could change to say, that any boat operating above 5 miles an hour has to be 150 feet. We can make that at any time in a year after we review this.
That is correct. Business, I like to fish. I will not go close to a lake that allows anything above, above 5 feet. Out there fishing to have fun, I don't want to spill my drink, my beer, or drop a fish. I like the way this is worded and described. We can go back at some point and revise as necessary to make it safer for our people using those areas in close to shore, whether they're fishing or kayaking, or getting their just out there swimming. That's a good point, that, you know, these things can be changed. And the, as Tom said, the Lakes Committee has studied this particular issue for two years. They're not done with it. They know they're not done with it. They're continuing to monitor, as Tom said, they want to keep looking at it. They want to keep the enjoyment of our lakes for all property owners at the best we can. So we keep looking at these things. Other, other comments?
One more question next, if I may, sorry. We discussed this in some of our meetings. Do we know how many wake boats that we have?
We make assumptions.
Yeah, approximately 10. In the event that this becomes an issue, are we looking at capping that at some point? Is that a possibility? It does not. That can do. Question.
Yeah, we've had outside offering, we've had as well, and it's either an all or nothing type of thing at this point, we've been told. So there's other recommendations, other possibilities that we could look at, but for now, it's either allow or you don't.
Okay, thank you.
You put reasonable restrictions in place for when you do allow them.
David? Yeah, a couple of things on this regulation that, I'll just start with the one, and then I'll have others, but I'd like to. Where in the world did the idea come from that we should allow houseboats on our lakes? We do not, in Section 8, it says that watercraft with permanent sleeping facilities, permanent kitchen, bathroom, toilet facilities are permitted and must be registered. However, the use of such facilities which would result in any matter being thrown down or under the lakes is prohibited. Because, you know, our policy forbids it. Can I, can I jump in?
So Jerry, Jerry Hofer, Director Hofer, pointed that out, that he felt that the regulations as a whole needed work. So he is now, he is requested, and the email went out to the entire board, requested that we approve the regulation, that we limit the motion to approving the regulation just for wake boats, and that we would work on the rest of the overall voting regulation next month, starting at the GM meeting, and then going to the work session and so forth. So if you have concerns about houseboats or something of that nature, Director Hofer, I think, has similar concerns, and that's why he brought up that one.
And Steve, just to clarify, the motion that I made is just, it specifically says that development of the regulation of wake boats is not about this entire document, it's just the addition of.
So which part of that is to be considered? So if you look at the one side where you see fishing and boating and water sports, and on the left-hand side, number three. So it will go from general regulation all the way down not to include number seven. So three, four, five, and six are some direct copies of the regulation that the Rules and Regulations Committee put together. And I'd also like to point out that this regulation sheet, other than the changes for wake boats, was what we had in place since last year. I think last year at this time, the Lakes Committee made some recommendations on changes. So in other words, if you had some challenges, it was there last year. Not, not saying that it shouldn't be changed, but it was later there last year also.
The houseboat was? It would violate the policy?
Sure.
I don't agree with you about this policy. Because it's policy, it prohibits jet sleeping and permanently enclosed kitchens and bathrooms and sleeping quarters. I think it prohibits the use of those, but this, this iteration has been the same for at least seven years. And so, and probably much, much before that. But like, like Tom said, you know, it needs to be addressed and changed. We can certainly do that.
All right, so going back to the motion, it's under the Voting Rules and Regulations, number which?
Number six?
Number three, four, five, and six. Continue to be issued of wakes and wake boats. Any other comments? I'll call the motion then. Ruth said, vote yes. All in favor of the regulation? Seven, all opposed? One opposed, one abstained.
Okay. Mr. Ray, on the extent of abstention. Please raise your hand on the extent. Thank you very much.
Very abstained.
Next up on your board packet is page 171. At the last Community Involvement Committee, there was discussion about how over the last year, two years, the committee has struggled to get volunteers. POA has advertised multiple times in multiple ways to try and get additional volunteers. Fortunately, they, we have been unsuccessful in getting additional volunteers. So the committee started discussing whether it made sense to disband the committee. Now, one thing, on the bottom of page 171, you'll see the lasting legacy. Two of the things that they created most recently that are active are the Charity Cook Drive, which was a huge success this last year, and the Fireflies and Tailgates. And so management has stated that we would take, if the committee gets disbanded, management will take over the operation. So those two valued events would continue. Also, the precursor for the community Also, the precursor for the Community Involvement Committee was the Young Residents Committee, and they were instrumental in the, in the decision to renovate the playground equipment and the creation of the beach at Lake Avalon. So, well, this is indebted to the efforts of the Young Residents Committee and the Community Involvement Committee. They've done a lot of great work over the last few years, unfortunately, they've been unsuccessful in getting people to volunteer for this committee. Let me, I'm sorry, one more thing. And we've spoken to each of the committee members and offered that we do our best to plate, if they want to continue to volunteer, to place them on potentially the rec committee or something of that nature, to see if they would like to continue servicing, serving the community.
Want to make a motion?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to disband the Community Involvement Committee effective immediately. Further, the Rules and Regulation Committee is directed to prepare modifications to the governing documents to remove the committee of, Community Involvement Committee.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
David Wilson, seconds. Any discussion? Jerry?
I would like to make an amendment to the motion that we also include the super committee. It hasn't been, it's not been like this. We, so, I'm sort of, I'm not like.
Is there a second to that amendment?
Thank you. I would second if that, could we put it in a separate amendment? Because it is a committee, existing committee, rather than attaching to disbanding this committee.
Jerry, would you, would you make that as a separate motion? Would you agree to that? Or would you rather stick with the amendment? Which is the best way to handle it?
Yeah, it doesn't really matter. You're, you're disbanding both of them, or, I mean, that's the intent, right? That you had, that you disband one of them, so I think it's perfectly, a perfect option to add it on your bylaws. Second.
Second motion, from a man, from Jerry Hofer. We have a second of that motion to amend from GM. Jerry, you have something to say?
Just if the chair wants to make it separate, I'd be happy to make it separate, but we can handle it together.
Doug is fine with it being together.
Well, the only reason you would want, you can do it together, absolutely. The only reason you would actually want to make it separate is if a board member agrees to, wants to disband one, but not disband the other. If the board, the board is in favor of disbanding both, that's totally fine. But a board member could want to just disband one and not the other.
That discussion on the amendment? Is there anybody who would object to amending? Okay, then we will vote on the amendment to add super committee, all in favor? Nobody opposed?
Just a comment regarding the Community Involvement Committee and the previous Residents Committee. Again, I personally thank them for their efforts in helping us spearhead the beach promotion and the playground revisions. And I think I saw informal evidence of a lot of that same group tonight in emails that the board received regarding support for them and their families and the fact that some of them work in town and they'll be able to ride and work. I think I saw evidence of some of that in the emails that the board received. A lot of them, Metfield younger family residents.
Any other discussions on the motion to have amended? Call for vote then, all in favor of disbanding the super committee and the Community Involvement Committee and having rules and regulations correct and prepare the modifications for the board to get those out of the policies. All in favor? Nine to zero. There's no other business before the board, I would entertain motion to adjourn.
So moved.
David Wilson, I made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I will read the announcements before we appear before, or I ask before. Coffee and questions is Tuesday, March 10th, 10:00 a.m. At the Metfield Clubhouse, that's for new members, if you know anybody, I have a new neighbor or something. Haven't come on. Board of Directors, GM meeting Thursday, March 12th, 4:30 p.m. In Boardroom at Metfield. Meet the candidates tonight, Tuesday, March 17th, 6:00 p.m. We're called, we're right here. Board of Directors, work session Thursday, March 19th, 9:00 a.m. In Boardroom at Metfield. Board of Directors, quick session Thursday, March 26th, 6:00 p.m. In Boardroom at Metfield. All in favor of adjourned? It's adjourned. Thank you for your.